Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for May 13th to order if the reporter would please call the roll.
Counselor Kizer.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nenke.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook is absent and filling in for her is Andy Zimmerman. Guess, let's see, Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zimmerman, welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Good. Well, please, please participate at the point you'd like to, so I look forward to it. Additions and deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move revision to the agenda. Item 6F has been appealed.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor comments. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things I want to report, community activities that I was involved with since the last meeting. The first one was about a week ago Friday, I went to Shkabod Center for Jewish Community Life to hold a vigil for the, I'll just say assassination in Palway at the Jewish temple there. The police department was also there with Lieutenant Van Meter, and I appreciate their being there. It was a very moving service. I spoke to on behalf of the city and also on behalf of myself as an individual, and we need to do everything we can in Salem, and I think we're doing a good job, but we could always do better in making sure that this kind of hatred and evil violence does not come into our city. The second one is more promising for the future. On May 7th, at lunchtime, I attended the Salem Kaiser Public School Building Connections Turnaround Achievement Awards, and Fire Chief Niblock was also there representing the city. And these are children from middle school through high school who have had some issues with their development in school and in life, and who through counseling and hard work by the school district and also their parents, and most importantly, the kids themselves, they were awarded these turnaround achievement awards for how they had on their own, sixth grade through senior in high school, realized that the way they were moving was not the way that they were going to be productive members of society, and they changed their minds, and they have really, it was good to recognize these young people who are the future of our community. So I commend those children, and it was a terrific moving ceremony.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Manager?
Quick, quick comment, thank you, Mayor. Sometimes city meetings conflict. Last week on May 8th, the same night as the Budget Committee, there was a public workshop on Our Salem. I encourage counselors and the public to go to the city website and go to the Our Salem page. At Our Salem, you will find the May 8th presentation that was made to the community open house, the Our Salem Draft Report Card, and a draft community greenhouse gas emissions inventory, as well as additional, lots of additional information regarding Our Salem. The first phase of Our Salem is focused on examining the existing conditions of the city, our vital signs, and evaluating different scenarios for how Salem could grow under current policies. The next phase, which I believe Community Development Director Wright referenced during the Budget Committee meeting, will be more of what's possible, a visioning phase to establish the community's vision for future growth and development, and that will be a recommendation that will be brought to council at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Just in case. Okay. I'm going to go ahead with some proclamations then for this evening. Scott? Scott Snyder is president of the Salem Area Lodging Association and Travel Salem Board Member, and we are going to be celebrating Salem Tourism Month. Here.
Right on your friends.
There you go, sir. Whereas the travel and tourism industry supports the vital interests of City of Salem and the state of Oregon, contributing to employment, economic prosperity, international trade, understanding, and goodwill. Wow. All that from the Grand Hotel?
Yes.
That's pretty amazing. And whereas travel and tourism ranks as one of Oregon's largest industries, generating $11.3 billion to the state's economy, and whereas visitors to Salem, the Salem area contributed $593.1 million to the economy last year, and whereas those travelers provided jobs for 6,910 tourism and hospitality professionals in the Salem area and local tax revenue of $4.5 million, and whereas as people around the world become more aware of the outstanding cultural and recreational resources available in Oregon and in the Salem area, travel and tourism will become an increasingly important aspect in the lives of our residents. And whereas, given these significant contributions to the economic, social, and cultural well-being of the residents of Salem, it's fitting that we recognize the importance of travel and tourism. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Salem Tourism Month and encourage all residents to observe this month by participating in appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities dated this 13th day of May 2019.
Thank you very much for the recognition. I am a proud member of the Travel Salem Board of Directors and definitely get a chance to observe the great work that our destination marketing organization does to promote our area and make sure that people that may not be aware of what Salem has to offer are enticed enough to come and visit. And we will, in the hospitality industry, continue to do our very best to make sure that the welcome mat is always out for Salem. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have a meeting that conflicts with a couple of veterans organizations, so we'll be making this available to the VFW and American Legion, this proclamation. Whereas the men and women in the armed forces of the United States have placed the security of our nation before their own safety, and America will be forever grateful for their service. Whereas Memorial Day is celebrated every year to collectively reflect on the memories of those who have served this country and to be reminded that freedom is never free. And whereas we honor our fallen soldiers, our military personnel, and our veterans who continue to serve for the ideals of freedom, and we pay tribute to their personal sacrifices. And whereas in Salem, Oregon, we are committed to honoring the memories of service members who perished in service to their country with reverence and gratitude. And whereas each person who lost their life in service to his or her country was a loved one who is cherished by family and friends, and each death was a tremendous loss to the community, state, and nation. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 27, 2019, as Memorial Day 2019, and call upon all residents to reflect upon the service of our courageous men and women in uniform and thank them for the ultimate sacrifice they have given to protect our freedoms and liberties dated this 13th day of May 2019. One more. It's a busy month.
Three.
Ah, here you are. Vice Chair Russell Schutte and Historic Landmarks Commission Representative Jennifer McClinty.
Timbuk.
Oh, Timbuk. I didn't, I was so busy sounding out McClinty.
You did a good job.
Well, got that far. Okay. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Whereas May is National Historic Preservation Month, cosponsored by Salem Historic Landmarks Commission, the National Park Service, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Historic Preservation Month and encourage all residents to observe this month by participating in appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities dated this 13th day of May 2019. And here's the proclamation.
Just quickly, this month's meeting, which is this coming Thursday, actually, we're handing out our awards this year for, we have two historic awards we give out for projects in town and/or groups and organizations that have helped with some sort of historic project. And, I can't tell you who they are.
Not yet.
Come to the meeting. And also, we have our annual photo contest. This year, we ended up with, I think, 60 or 70 photos, I want to say, which was almost double last year. So it was really kind of a fun, it's becoming a little bit more involved, and we opened it up to selfie category, which we had a couple of kind of fun selfies in historic settings. So again, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
I want to acknowledge our Historic Preservation Officer as well as archaeologist Kimberly Fitzgerald, who just does amazing work in this area. So thank you, Kimberly. Public comment. Okay. This one's cross your name off. Joanne Lettingham. Come on down, Joanne. Yeah, no, no.
I'm just calling the first person. Just come up close.
You have, you have three minutes, Joanne.
I'll be quick as I can.
Okay, well, three minutes is all the quicker you have to be, but three minutes.
It's a 10-minute thing.
Quicks up. Yeah.
My name is Joanne Lettingham. I've lived in this area since 1974, so it feels like my hometown. I'm distressed about the homeless situation. I have no dog in this fight. I don't have low-income housing and nothing like that, but I have a plan. Calling it Joanne's Plan because that's what it is. I made copies of it that I'll leave up here on the counter for stuff I don't hit, but I'm going to read it because there's, I don't want to forget anything. This idea came to me wondering how the people with homes could help the people without homes. This is ongoing funding. The funding happens at the close of escrow for any property that is residential, including residential lots, single-family residents, and multiple units. If housing is permitted, it counts. Also, mixed-use properties on the percent that is residential. This will not affect property taxes or increased rents. It is to be paid by the seller and will only show on the seller's closing statement as a line item to the homeless fund in that jurisdiction. This should qualify as a deduction of some kind, if not a selling expense, a charitable contribution. Is to be paid by the seller and not the buyer. Buyers are scrimping to get in. Sellers leave a deal with cash. Okay? Commercial properties would be excluded, as would title transfers that had to do with estates or giving it to one spouse from the other, or that type of situation. Okay? Oh, and foreclosures. They wouldn't be, this wouldn't happen for foreclosures. The loan holder on a foreclosure would pay when the property was resold, sold, but not the person who was giving it up. New construction would be exempt because of the system development charges are already jacking up houses' prices. So they're out. The seller of the lot would have paid when the builder bought it. Okay? But when the builder sells it, it doesn't happen. It doesn't go then. Manufactured home parks would be included. Anything where you could put a house on it or people live, mixed-use developments, kind of like the 295 church where the city's downstairs. I used to live in one of those condos. That actually was the first one in. They would, the condos would be, it would be done on a percentage, okay? Let's see here. Oh, this would require an addendum to the real estate listing agreement. Doesn't need to be with the earnest money because the seller's doing it, so it's going to be the listing agreement. All money raised in that jurisdiction to be used there. This will keep the higher populated areas from taking funds from the more rural ones. It should also work proportionate to the need. The nonprofits that help with this ongoing issue would apply for these funds. The county commissioners in each county would decide who gets what. If there are no commissioners, then the city council decides. This will bring in millions.
Joanne, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Oh!
I know.
Oh, it's so good. The best part's coming.
Well, you know what? You're leaving us a copy, and I really appreciate it.
I'm leaving you a copy. Please get one.
Does anyone have any questions?
Actually, I wouldn't even mind passing them out.
Does anyone have any questions?
Please do, because it's a great idea. I'm a retired realtor, so I really thought this through.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't read faster. But my heart's in it, and I hope that you all read it and.
Thank you.
I mean, where do you?
Okay. Go to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Anderson.
I think we have the shortest consent calendar of the year here. We have item 3.1A, which are the minutes of the April 22nd council work session, also minutes of the April 22nd council meeting, and we have an action item, 3.3A, the priority bills for the 2019 legislative session.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We have no resolutions. We'll move on to action items. Counselor Hoy?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to motion on these articles?
Yeah.
Okay, so, oh, that's a consent. I'm sorry. Public hearing. We got the Unified Development. Bryce! Gosh, it's been a long time.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing for the purpose of considering ordinance bill number 619. The criteria applicable to the proposed amendments are set forth in Salem Revised Code, Chapter 110.085B. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes per association for testimony, and individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I sat down there for a second because I thought, oh, she's got to read the ordinance bill. It's like the long paragraph, so that'll be the next meeting, hopefully. All right. So again, Bryce Bishop with the Planning Division. I'm here tonight to present the proposed amendments updating the Unified Development Code. And so in terms of a little bit of a background, UDC was a comprehensive rewrite and streamlining of our development code, which hadn't had a comprehensive rewrite, you know, from the time we had done it in 2013, about, since 1983, so about 30 years of time that elapsed since there was a comprehensive revision of the code. And so what it did, it reorganized and consolidated several of the different sections of the code, the Salem Revised Code that dealt with land divisions, the zoning code, and specific public works chapters, put them into one code, Unified Development Code, and that went into effect in May of 2014. And so since we didn't want to be in a position of having the code sit for another 30 years before we updated it again and go through that multi-year process to do that, it was always intended that the UDC would be updated periodically, and so in 2016 was the last set of amendments that updated it, and now we're with this new package of amendments, a little bit more than what was seen in 2016 to update the UDC, you know, addressing issues that have come up since the last set of amendments. So in terms of the process that led us to the hearing tonight, there were three planning commission work sessions that were held at the end of 2018, beginning of 2019. They were open to the public, and public was encouraged to attend. We received testimony from citizens and also input from the planning commission at those work sessions. After the work sessions, we further revised the proposed amendments and then finalized the draft language, sent that out for public notice, and then there was a public hearing scheduled with the planning commission in February of this year. Planning commission ended up wanting to have a second additional hearing to consider the amendments, and after those public hearings, they recommended that staff, or the council, approve the proposed amendments with 13 additional revisions, all of which, all of them which are incorporated except for two. In terms of the public notice and outreach that was provided for the amendments, we sent notice to all the neighborhood associations and other entities that are required to receive notice under the code. In addition, we have an email blast list of over 1,700 people that the planning division maintains that we send out periodic updates on as the amendment was going through the process. And then also, we have the staff report and the proposed amendments available on the planning division website for the public to look at. So as you can see from the ordinance, there's, the amendments cover a lot of different, you know, included a lot of different revisions, but the highlights of the proposed amendments can kind of be boiled down to kind of four main areas and then some general provisions. So the first main area of highlight are amendments that we're proposing to increase public notice, and this are, these are in part in response to concerns we've heard from the neighborhood associations over the years in terms of trying to, you know, get the, you know, applicants and the neighborhood associations, you know, communicating earlier before the application is submitted. And so two of the requirements for additional notice in the proposed amendments that relate to that are, one, requiring the applicant to contact the neighborhood association chair and land use chair either in writing or by email prior to the patient's submission. And it's not, they don't have to attend the meeting, it's just to, you know, reach out, you know, explain who they are, what their project is, where it's located, to allow, you know, for that initial dialogue. And what could come of that could be an invitation to a neighborhood association meeting, so that's a good thing we feel. And then that requirement would apply to a pretty, you know, exhaustive list, well, several land use applications require notice, but then there's one additional higher level of neighborhood engagement, and that would be an applicant-sponsored open house or the actual requirement to attend a neighborhood meeting, and that would be required for more significant types of applications, like a comp plan, map change, demolition of a historic resource, or the applications that do with the fairview zone, such as establishing a new refinement plan on the property or major amendments to those types of plans. In addition to the neighborhood association contact, we also are proposing to require notice to tenants in addition to property owners within 250 feet of the property. So currently, if you own land within 250 feet of a property that's subject to a development, you'll get a mailed notice. We've been expanding that in a pilot project to also include tenants, so we send addresses of those individuals within the 250-foot area. The whole idea is to, you know, capture not only owners, but the people who live in the neighborhood to get their input through the land use process. And then the final set of amendments we've proposed to increase notice is to require notice to active and registered homeowners associations, and this recommendation came from the planning commission, and it's really intended to address developments that are being proposed that are affecting land within a homeowners association, and it will require the applicant, you know, to provide the city, you know, staff with the homeowners association name and the registered agent, and then we will send a notice to that homeowners association. So that would oftentimes occur in a subdivision, or if you were looking to further divide a land that's subject to a homeowners association, that we would send a notice to the HOA, the registered agent. So that would be that requirement. The second group of highlights include improved pedestrian access standards, and so these are all about trying to increase pedestrian safety and connectivity on development sites. They would apply to non-residential uses, so they wouldn't apply to single-family, multifamily, or two-family, but commercial, industrial, those types of developments. And in order to achieve this increased safety and pedestrian connectivity, we're requiring connections, you know, through parking lots that are a certain size, larger size, between building entrances in the street, between buildings on the same development site, to an abutting property if you're providing vehicle access to another abutting property if you're sharing vehicle access. We also want you to share pedestrian access, and then also requirements to connect and/or construct paths through a property if there is a path or trail identified in the Salem Transportation System Plan or the Parks Master Plan that goes to the boundary of your property, a requirement to, you know, connect that trail or provide an easement through the site to make that link. And then the proposed amendments also establish some material requirements for the paths and also specify minimum width. The third highlight area is enhanced bicycle standards. So currently, our bike standards in the code are fairly simple. We've updated the standards, looked at other jurisdictions to try to get up to a better best practices, you know, for the city. So with that, we've introduced the concept of bike lockers. Currently, the code doesn't refer to bike lockers at all. City uses bike lockers, so now we have provisions for bike lockers in the code and standards for them. And then also, we don't really specify what types of racks are suitable, you know, under the code, so you can have a situation where you have a rack that really doesn't serve the purpose at all of being able to lock the bike or hold it in an upright position. So we've established additional requirements for clarifying what types of racks are and are not acceptable, and then additional requirements for access, you know, to the bike areas themselves. The fourth highlight area is the keeping of bees and ducks, and so this set of amendments is response to concerns we've, or desire, you know, from community members that's becoming more and more to see these types of additional animals or insects in the case of bees allowed in the code. And so in terms of allowing ducks, we're proposing to allow them in the same manner that we currently allow chickens, and so you can have up to a total of six, and so that would be either six chickens or six ducks total, or, you know, a combination of hens and ducks, up to six. One thing that's unique about, one thing that's unique about the ducks is that they need to have a water supply to keep themselves clean, so there is a requirement in the section that they need to have a water source for the ducks. And then in terms of bees, they're pretty much will be allowed in the same areas where you can have ducks and chickens at any residence or any community garden or governmental or church or other public agency property. We set a maximum limit of five hives, and then that hive limit can be increased to seven during bee season when you're trying to, you know, split the swarm or gather swarms or split the hives. And then also, there's a number of requirements, but in terms of like trying to prevent bees from, you know, flying onto your neighbor's property and becoming a nuisance, there's a requirement for a flyaway barrier, which is a vertical obstruction of a certain length that where the bees will fly out of the hive, they will go up and away instead of going directly onto your neighboring property, or if you don't have the flyaway barrier, elevating the hive 10 feet above the ground, and that's a way to get the bees so they will not be, you know, zeroing in on your neighbor's property and potentially maybe causing problems. And then other general proposed changes include changes to state law relating to housing, and these were requirements that came about not in this session, but a prior session with Senate Bill 1051. There's a provision that allows for the 120-day state mandated local decision deadline to be reduced to 100 days if you have an affordable housing project and you have a covenant, you subject the project to for 60 years. And then there's also, was a bill that required, prevented the city from establishing conditions on residential development proposals if the proposal is not already exceeding the maximum height or maximum density requirements of the zone. And so we can establish a condition that would reduce the height or density if it's not already exceeding the maximum height or density limits. We've also proposed standards to update our land use procedures. Part of that is and submitted requirements. One thing we've done is we've added a requirement to submit a preliminary grading plan with land division applications, subdivisions, partitions, plan unit developments, and site plan review applications. And we've also clarified the post-decision modification process, so right now it's not really clear in the code. If you modify a decision that was previously made, who the review authority is and how it's handled with appeal and council review, so we've made those changes. We've also added and clarified uses and definitions in the code, so for example, in the CB zone, currently you can't have retail sales of any marijuana products, but we've, we're proposing to add a allowance of CBD oil products, retail sales in the CB zone. So if you are a manufacturer of like an energy bar and you want to infuse that product with, you know, CBD oil, that would be allowed under the proposed amendments as it currently wouldn't be allowed. And then we've also proposed to allow the growing of recreational marijuana as a conditional use in the CG zone, and that would, you know, expand it beyond where it's currently allowed as a conditional use in the IC and IP zones. And then finally, we've, the proposed amendments include a variety of changes to and clarification of our development standards, and part of that is like clarifying what the setback is next to I-5, and then clarifying how your setbacks are determined when you're on a property that abuts the city limits where there's a little bit of vagueness and lack of, you know, clarity there. So with that, I would close my presentation. I would recommend that the council engross your clarifying what the setback is next to I-5 and then clarifying how your setbacks are determined when you're on a property that abuts the city limits where there's a little bit of vagueness and, and lack of, you know, clarity there. So with that, I would close my presentation. I would recommend that the council engross the ordinance bill as identified in the staff report. And that is to, one, include some additional revisions to the HOA notice requirement to make it more clear and specific. And then also there were four additional graphics that we were recommending to be incorporated to deal with bike parking and pedestrian access standards. And then advance that engrossed ordinance bill to second reading for enactment.
Okay, very good. We'll move then to public comment in the hearing. Again, it's, just looking to see if anyone's representing. It's three minutes. Are you representing a neighborhood group, Josh?
No.
Okay. Three minutes. At two minutes, the light turns yellow at, at red. Ask you to stop, please. So Josh Pollock, you're up first.
Good evening. My name is Josh Pollock. I live in Ward, dot, I ate. Sorry, just got off a plane. It's so, anyway, I'm here as an individual, not a member of the neighborhood association or the planning commission. I'm here to speak to the public notice to HOAs. Generally, here in, I submitted written testimony and I'm here only to address specific issues and if you have any questions. In Oregon, we really do promote communication and hearing what our citizens have to say when we do certain matters and changes. An HOA through the UDC is required to be established when a developer has a planned community and he sells the first property to a private individual. That private individual automatically is a member of an HOA and any property purchasers thereafter. So the HOA stands in the shoes of those property owners. They may, they have bylaws and they have CCNRs. And therefore, the HOA should be included as those who have public notice. Due process is notice, opportunity to be heard, an unbiased decision maker, and a decision on evidence based on the record. Notice is the gateway to all of that. So for one that stands in the, the shoes legally for those property owners, I think it's very, very important, especially when it's the land that is at issue that has contractual rights by those property owners. I also want to address the changes to the wording. Again, it's the HOA that has legal standing standing at shoes. So when the change says that the, the applicant should seek the information from Secretary of State on those duly incorporated and active, I, I say, well, that's really the only homeowners association that we should be concerned with. And that information is readily available to the applicant and can provide that to the state, I mean, to the city staff. And not only the homeowner's name, but the registered agent and the address, like any other corporation. That's really where you would go to seek the information for those that stand in for a larger group. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thanks for coming down, Josh, and thanks for your service on the Planning Commission. What is it about the, I mean, I read about the homeowners association in this package and how notice is going to be given. How does your suggestion differ from what's in the proposal?
No, my-
Are you, are you saying-
I am supportive.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's what I couldn't figure out.
Exactly what it is. It's just that, it's just that I, I was kind of, I was giving you the justification why it's required. Because it's never been required before.
Thank you very much.
At that side of what I thought, but-
You didn't say I support the-
I do support what it is. And, and support in general, all the other changes as well.
You don't have to ask me.
Okay, thank you.
Josh, I have a question as well on, on HOAs, although it's not specific to, to the HOA. I think you're describing, what about in the case of mobile home parks and land use changes there? Could, do you recall how that's dealt with?
Well, homeowners associate, well, homeowners association and the CCNRs, this all comes from, I believe, when I first started researching this, Oregon sort of, this is kind of pioneer stuff with them. So they actually had a take from California on how to deal with homeowners association, CCNRs and things such as that. And basically, the issue is, is that CCNRs are contractual rights on a specific piece of property.
Oh, okay.
And that's not the same as mobile home parks.
Right.
And so when HOA steps, steps in the shoes for all these other property owners who have contractual rights on the property that's come before you for some kind of change, that's when they should have noticed. And so mobile home parks, it's one owner for the whole park. So that's, that's, I think, a difference.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Natalie Janney?
I was ready.
You are?
I knew I was second.
Ralph, Ralph, Ragra?
Radia.
Radia, I apologize. You're next. Ms. Janney just set a standard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. My name is Natalie Janney. I'm with Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast. And tonight I'm here on behalf of the Home Builders Association. I just wanted to thank staff for all the work that they did. For the most part, I think that I really like a lot of the amendments that they've made, the proposed amendments. I especially appreciate how they handled notice to the neighborhood associations and neighborhood meetings. I feel like that is something that we as a development community can do, but it's not too cumbersome. The one concern that I do have with the proposed amendments is for the requirements for a preliminary grading plan for all land divisions and site design review. The fear is that requiring the preliminary grading plan as a submittal criteria will make it somehow binding to the land use decisions. And the fear would be that we would submit a preliminary grading plan, which may not have as much detail, or it, something could happen during the final design process where it would change and we would be held to that grading plan because it was a part of a land use decision. And that changing the grading plan could require us to come back for a modification for a subdivision. When the whole intention of the, of what I would see as a preliminary, preliminary grading plan would be just to prove that something could work, not that it be binding. In addition to the fact that providing the preliminary grading plan with enough detail that you could be comfortable with being held to it at a later stage is, requires a great deal of effort. And that effort isn't just time, it's also cost for the project. So all these things that are extra requirements ultimately tack on extra costs for a project that then could get passed on to the home buyer in the long run. And I have a very concrete example in my mind, a project we're working on right now, where we have a submittal, we've put in for a submittal and a street location is moving. And so if this were a requirement, I could see the possibility of having to redo the grading plan again as a part of the land use. So now you will have done two grading plans before you even have your land decision. I hope this makes sense. I'm trying to go quickly. So. Anyway, that was the main concern that I had with that change.
Did, did you share that with the committee? I mean, why did they continue with a preliminary grading plan, given your argument, what you know?
I, I brought this up at the, one of the work sessions for the Planning Commission and then I wasn't able to go to the public hearings afterwards. So I don't really know, but I did bring that up to the work session.
We'll check with Bryce as we go on to staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to be clear. When you're saying I have a concern, you, you mentioned that you're representing the home builders. Is it their concern as well or is it your concern? I just want to make sure I understand on, on whose behalf you're speaking.
The home, I'm assuming I'm speaking on behalf of the home builders since they asked us to come here to represent their interests. So-
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Kaser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question is, is more of a, I don't understand exactly how it all works. So I'm not in the development world. Only see bits of it as it comes to council. But right now, what do you submit? You submit a preliminary grading plan right now?
We would submit a preliminary utility plan. A lot of times we do end up submitting a preliminary grading plan. Usually it's in conjunction with like a stormwater, preliminary stormwater report, which it still brings me so much angst that I even have to provide a preliminary stormwater report, but that's, that goes back to the stormwater standards. But anyway. And so normally it's done as a justification to, to, just the fact that it can be done. So basically to prove that I'm not trying to put water uphill. So I provide a grading report or grading plan to prove that I'm not trying to do something that's impossible.
So when do those preliminary plans, whatever they might be, become real or actual or as, as we will build it? Is that after the decision?
After land use. Yeah, we don't, we don't put the effort into final design until we know that we are going to be able to do it in the first place. And also to make sure that it kind of has landed because a lot of times things can drastically change through the land use process.
Okay, thanks.
Following up on that, have you been held to a stormwater plan as a finding in the subsequent land use actions? I mean, assuming this is a similar kind of, of proof of possibility, have you been, has it become so specific that stormwater plan that you've been forced to do a stormwater plan that really didn't fit what your final plat plans look like or whatever you end up with?
No, because in order to, the stormwater plans are very, are usually fairly general.
Isn't that what the grading plan is as well?
I don't know. Is it? I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I would think, my point being, I don't know that you need to require it because I think that kind of level of grading plan is being done.
It's routine then. You do that in advance when you get the property, you figure out if you can?
Well, I do. I mean, I still can't speak for all engineers, but when I'm doing my stormwater plan, I want to make sure that what I've told the city I can do is something that I can do. And they've been pretty clear that they want to see that as, on a conceptual level that it is possible. But I don't want to get into a, I don't want to do, have to do a full-on stormwater and grading design for every single project. It should be determined on a case-by-case basis. Which is kind of how it's being addressed now. If it's a really complicated, really hilly, you know, there's lots of topography on a site, then staff has been asking us to provide that information and we've been providing it to prove that it can be done. But if it's a fairly flat site, I don't think that the effort should need to be put in to provide the grading plan for land use.
Okay. Counselor?
My second question popped back in my mind. So when you submit a preliminary stormwater plan now and then it gets approved and you need to change it later, what happens? Are you held to that standard? Are you held to what was approved by the land use or are you?
It would be more typical that I would try and hold, hold to the fact that I got it approved, kind of.
So you would try to do what you had said in the plan, even though it was preliminary?
Right, right. But generally, so say you have a, so like the Grove would be in, at Fairview would be an example. That was done as a, it had all these little tiny catchments all throughout the site. And so it gets done as a whole site. So that's how the preliminary, the preliminary stormwater report gets done. In the final design process, every single facility has to be sized individually. And so through, so that happened after land use. I don't want to do that for my preliminary. So it's very much a whole site. And the grading changed, it, it did change after land use before, you know, now that we've done the, the site civil work. So I don't want to be held to my preliminary grading plan because I needed it to change. Because I, you know, if this basin got smaller because this one needed to be bigger, that affects the grading plan.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Bryce, be prepared to kind of clarify from your perspective what's going on here. At least the standards you're going to use in these preliminary plans so we can kind of understand what's going on here. I think, thank you. Thank you very much. Ralph Radia. You'll be followed by Tim Ramus. Ramus?
Yeah, my name is Ralph Radia. I'm a longtime beekeeper in Salem. I've also been a member of the Land Valley Bee Association, which is located in Salem. And I'm a representative of the Oregon State Beekeepers Association. Over, you have a written copy of my testimony, so I've got to summarize some of it. Over the last 20 years or so, I've appeared before at least a dozen, maybe more governmental agencies, trying to get them to eliminate rules covering honeybees. Because most of the rules are unnecessary and are unproductive. And they were written years ago when cities and counties decided they didn't want commercial beekeeping in residential areas. So they adopt rules covering livestock and chickens and pigs and bees and ducks and whatever. But residential beekeeping isn't commercial beekeeping. It's hobby beekeeping. But those rules are still on the books. And they were actually on the books in Salem roughly about 20, 30 years ago. But there was an exception that said, in residential areas, you could have five hives. However, the sentence that that was written in was so confusing that the enforcement people decided, no, you couldn't have any hives. So 20 years ago, we were cited beekeepers in Salem for having bees in order to get out of the city with them. Well, the city council intervened and said, no, that's wrong. And so for a number of years, we had that, five hives. Then somebody revised your code and that disappeared. Guess what? Now there's no rules on beekeeping. And so if you ask enforcement or you ask somebody about beekeeping, they'll say, no, there isn't any rules allowing beekeeping in Salem. So where did you get the idea you can keep bees? Well, we've been doing it. Well, the thing is, the county is actually, has a ban on beekeeping in residential areas. And they will not change their ban until Salem affirmative says that you can have honeybees. Then they will change theirs to agree with Salem. Now normally, I'm against rules. But in this case, because of the way Salem and Marion County handles things, I think you need some rules. The rules aren't the best, but we're willing to accept them. Some of them are unnecessary, but we're willing to accept them. So I'm here and I have a couple of other representatives here that is in support of rules which we have been normally be telling you you don't need.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, so you've had a chance to review this and this will allow you to have five hives?
Yes.
No question?
No, no. In fact, the old rule was five and I at times usually have three, but I've had as many as seven. So, and hobbyists don't want lots of hives. It becomes work.
So this resolves that, you mentioned there might be some things in it you were concerned about. Anything specific that really pops to mind?
Yeah, there was one item, let me get it here. I was saying that you really don't need, but hey, we can live with it. Oh, it says you need to point the entrance away from your neighbor. Well, it turns out because of the way bees do things, it's preferably to locate the entrance towards the southeast so they get the morning sun so they warm up. Now if your neighbor's on the southeast, you can't point the hive that way. Even if you're 25 feet away, you can't point the hive that way according to your rules. It's not necessary, but hey, we can live with it.
But it'd be better without it.
It'd be better without it, but hey, it's okay.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Schaefer?
I'm going to pass. Can you kind of speak for us?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. For your record, Tim Ramus. My office is at Two Center Point Drive, Lake Oswego. And I'm here tonight as counsel for North Star Subdivision Project, which is the largest single-family project in the city, providing housing which is modestly priced and it's delivering homes at under $300,000. Our focus is on an amendment which is in section 200050B for your reference, and it appears at page 34 of 170. We appreciate very much the efforts of your staff to try to resolve an internal conundrum in your regulations that is impeding the project. And we're here to endorse the language that they have suggested, but also to ask that you continue the proceeding to consider some additional language that we are offering. And it's in a handout that you've received. It has a map on the front, which is designed to more fully solve the problem, at least in a way that, that would help this subdivision. Here's the conundrum. And I think you'll see it's a problem for, for the city, for DLCD and for anyone who is expecting that land inside the UGB is actually available for housing. The problem's this. On the one hand, your regulations require that where street extensions are mapped, they must be built. So in your TSP, if you have a street there, it's got to be built, even if it crosses a BPA power line. You also have a provision in your code, on the other hand, that says that those streets have to be dedicated, but the city will not accept the dedication if there's any encumbrance on it, like a BPA power line. So on the one hand, you've got to build the improvement and dedicate it. On the other hand, you can't. On the other hand, you can't. So, that's the problem we're trying to solve. The staff's language does that partially by saying that the city can accept that sort of situation where there's an alternative route. But as you'll see from the map that I've submitted, these power line easements are long and they're often situations where there's no way to go around it. So, you're stuck with a situation where you're impeded and you can't move ahead. So, we've suggested some language that says that when you're in that situation, the city retains the discretion to make a determination about whether there's really a substantial risk of a problem. And if not, it has the discretion to approve, excuse me, approve and allow the connection to be made. So, we would urge you to consider that language. In 40-some years of representing cities, I've not seen this issue arise. And certainly for all the development that took place on the west side of, of your city, there are at least eight streets that cross power lines where this was not an issue. So, we're hoping it won't be that hard to resolve it. Thank you.
Mr. Ramus, I have a question. I've, I've looked at this, a little bit, this issue and doesn't the city currently have discretion? Apparently it does because it's done it over and over again on the west side. I mean, don't we have, you're asking us to put it in, we have discretion. It appears they have discretion and they're just not exercising it in this case.
You know, when this matter first came to me, that's almost...
I'm not sure you're solving your problem by giving us more discretion.
When I first encountered this problem and it was described to me on the phone, I gave almost exactly the same answer as you just described, word for word. I thought the city had discretion. The advice of your counsel is that you do not under current code. And therefore, some discretion needs to be built into the code. And, and while you have in the past certainly exercised discretion and allowed this condition to take place, apparently, under current interpretation, the issue has surfaced and our client's being told, without a change in the code, it's not going to be possible to solve the problem. So, I guess what we're asking for is enough language that you truly have discretion to solve it. If it's limited, as the current staff language is, to simply the situation where there is an alternative, we don't have a solution because we don't have a way around that BPA line.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think I might have another question.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
This question, sir, has nothing, absolutely nothing to do with what you hear before us today. Did you go to University of Oregon Law School and graduated in '75, '76, or '77?
Yes, in 1975, I was fortunate enough to graduate.
I'm a '76 graduate and we met at law school.
You look familiar.
I think in moot court issues or something, yeah. So...
All right. Good to see you.
Yes.
Don't break into the fight song. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I, I can't imagine that this is a unique issue to Salem. Do you have suggestive language from maybe other municipalities on how they've dealt with this issue that you could share?
I have not seen this, this problem arise in other jurisdictions. And so, there's not a cookbook solution that I can offer. That's why we've drafted some additional text, which we hope you will consider, take the time to consider. Because we think our text gives you the discretion you need to solve the problem.
Again, I just want to make sure this will resolve that problem out there. Or does it leave again? Does it take you back just around the circle and then whoever's going to exercise the discretion will have the opportunity to say, well, yeah, thank you for the opportunity, but no.
Well, we've actually given you two options. One of which is in section three of the language we've, we've suggested, which preserves to the city the discretion to possibly say no, where they think there's risk. But section four, that we've drafted, would say, in any situation where the city has actually mapped and required the infrastructure to cross a BPA line, in that situation, the city will accept the dedication. So, there's, there's a choice for you to make there. We would, in the best of all possible worlds, section four is, is what we're really seeking.
I'm just baffled by this one. But I have been watching it for some time. I just do not understand why there's a problem here and there never has been before. You talk about a risk. What is the risk we are talking about here?
Well, I hesitate to make the case...
I mean, is BPA going to tear up our street and say we can't cross or...
I think it's a non-risk.
Yeah. Have they done that before?
We've asked BPA that question. They have not required that before.
Yeah.
They've been doing this literally for decades.
Yeah.
Signing agreements, saying you may use the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Subject to their right to repeal that decision, but they, they just don't do that.
Yes, Counselor.
Doesn't, don't we have the situation on Sunny View Road? Because, I mean, we have the BPA power lines right over the top of Sunny View.
All over town.
Right.
We have this issue. Apparently, no one ever noticed it before this, this development on Kale Road. It's a brand-new shocker. Another conundrum for us. I, I'm just, I really am frustrated. I, I really want to make sure this solves the problem. We never hear about this ever, ever again. Because it just doesn't make sense that we're arguing about something that's been resolved for years, decades, probably since electricity.
Well, I commend your attention to our section four, which I think is a complete solution.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you. I'll pass.
Okay. Carl Ivanoff?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been so long, I'm just, I'm just delighted to be back. Eric Moyer, 517 Lake Fair Place North. Just want to again ask that you indulge us with section four, take a look at it. That one does solve the problem, does create the opportunity for, for your requirement that a street goes in and in this case that it, that it underpasses the BPA power lines. So, as, as the development team, we're part of, of that solution and urge that, that you select that number four. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? And our Temple?
I just wanted to add some levity to the beekeeping thing. Counsel, Mayor. I'm one of those people that moved, I've been beekeeping for about 20 years and I moved to West Salem about 15 years ago. And within a year, I got a complaint because I had three hives in the backyard. And I went to this man right here, Mike Rodea, and we stepped through all of the whole things. And basically, it came to everybody just threw their hands up because nobody knew exactly what it was said, what it was said and what was required. The other thing to remember is that there are three reactions to a bee sting. One of them is nothing like me. The other one is I swell up a little bit, I get a little bit of a bump or something. And the other one is when you start having trouble breathing. That's the one you've got to worry about. Some people do that, other people don't. So, this can vary all over the place. And the last point is that the more you try to regulate beekeeping, the more it becomes like herding cats because the bees will do what bees do. And they will go wherever they want to go. That's it. Thank you.
That's it. It's a great model.
Well, I need a little lesson on the bees. And I'm one of those ones that swell up, so I'm not real excited when they come in my backyard. But we heard tonight about the, either having the hives be 10 feet off the ground or a, some type of mechanism that forces them up and then they fly out. Is that true? Because you just said bees go anywhere they want to. And if that's true, they're going to come after me.
No, well, they don't, they don't, a honeybee doesn't come after anybody. I've done several presentations up at Omsi with a tree hive that was literally a hive built in a tree. And one of the things that I enjoy telling especially the women, when they look at it and I'm, I'm afraid of bees, I says, well, if one lands on you, don't swat it, don't do anything, don't try to brush it away. The moment it finds out that you've been lying to your parents all these years and are not made of sugar, it will leave.
So, what have you been telling your parents?
I'm not going to tell you how sweet I am.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Did anyone else want to testify on the unified development code changes?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
So, I'm Jeanette Ryan Bush and I live on South Idlewood Drive. And I've lived on a farm my entire life until three years ago. So, I've never been to a city council meeting.
Well, welcome.
And I just want to encourage you to vote yes on duck ordinance because ducks are really anybody here who gardens. And we're all, you know, concerned about food security. Anybody here who gardens knows that slugs and snails are the bane of our existence. And there's no better way to manage them than ducks. They're quiet, other than call ducks, you know, they don't fly, other than the Scovis, you know. So, I'm just, you know, saying ducks are, I have like four people in my neighborhood who, I got ducks when I very first came here, not realizing you couldn't have ducks. I've since gotten rid of them. But my neighbors were all totally bummed out when I got rid of my ducks. I mean, the kids would have walked by and see them in the morning and it built a sense of community. So, I'm just asking you to vote in favor of ducks.
Great. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
My name is David Lindquist and I live in the Janree area. You have to go in and out of town several times to get to, to my property. And as a resident of Marion County, I was one where I was told that I had to get rid of my bees and did. And that was a disappointment because it's been, been a hobby for me and my daughter for several years. She's here with me tonight. My son found out about it and got, he got involved. So, it's a good family type of activity. I too am allergic to bees, but I oftentimes dress like this when I'm working my bees. And I, I say that because bees themselves, though they can be agitated, they're, they're not by nature aggressive. And, you know, like the gentleman was saying, you know, they, when they realize that you're not their enemy, you know, they, they go their way. And so, but, but I would like to just encourage the vote of, I'll express appreciation ahead of time for your, your vote in, in passing, you know, the, the acceptance of beekeeping in, in Salem. That'll help Marion County make the right decision. I do encourage the less restriction, the better. Most of us as beekeepers, you know, are responsible and we, we respect our bees, we respect our neighbors and we, and we want to be able to do the right thing. I myself have, have been able to help several people, both in and out of the city of Salem proper, when, when they wind up with hives or with bees that have moved into a wall or something along those lines. And, and beekeepers are, are an important part, I think, of, of our, of our, our setup here as far as taking care of, of the world around us and, and, you know, making sure that the pollinators are being taken care of. So, again, thank you in advance for, for getting this thing rolling and with as few restrictions as possible.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All righty. Bryce? Who we got? You, you already did it.
I don't believe I answered your question.
I, I'm going to have to ask you to stop. You're, you're done. You're done. Okay. Who else? Okay? Good. We'll go to staff questions. So, why don't we start with grading and explain to us the preliminary, the standards for preliminary, kind of understanding what that's all about, would you?
Well, I believe like Natalie testified, it wouldn't be a final grading plan. It's to, it's a truth in concept, you know, looking at, you know, where you're going to move, you know, land from one area of the site to another to accommodate not only storm drainage, but also street grades. And the grading plan also affects tree preservation. So, at the type of, at the time of subdivision approval, the applicant is presenting a tree conservation plan and on sites, you know, in the south and the west where a lot of our undeveloped land, you know, exists that will be subdivided, there is topography there. So, if we do not have at least the ability to have a preliminary, not a final, but a preliminary grading plan to know how the site will be laid out and the street grades will be attained and will be within our maximum, minimums and maximums for fire and life safety access, you know, we're really blind and in the dark in terms of whether or not, you know, the development will work or not. And so, that's why, you know, the testimony provided indicates that, yeah, there are times where, you know, because of the topography that, you know, you know, what is a preliminary grading plan is being submitted. And that's a valuable tool to understand because when people are going through the land use process, you know, the, and notice is being provided, there is kind of an expectation of, you know, what is being presented will, is feasible to happen and will, you know, but when you don't have a grading plan that analyzes a site in such a manner and then you wait till, you know, the tentative plan is approved and you come in later and then you're looking at your final plat and you all of a sudden realize, oh, I didn't do the grading plan, the street that we had showed there doesn't work anymore because the grades are, you know, 15% and now I've got to go back and modify the decision. It's just kind of a basic tool and, you know, in, in order to lay out a development and know that it works. And I don't, and I don't think that we're so rigid like the preliminary utility plan. You know, there's a, something called substantial conformance at the time, at the time of like a subdivision where if you've shown the preliminary plan, there is a degree of, of flexibility that is given in, in terms of determining whether or not that what you originally provided, you know, matches up with the, with, with the final proposal.
Will that be your standard then is sort of a preliminary, the term you used, the performance?
Yeah, substantial conformance?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, that's, that's the typical thing that we look at, you know, when you have the, the initial and then you have the final, we look to make sure that what you're proposing substantially conforms to what you originally proposed.
Are they though? I, I heard Ms. Janney saying essentially she's concerned that it will become kind of cooked into the plan. It becomes part of the, a potential part of the findings and suddenly they're, as they have to change it, they have a real difficulty dealing with it. Does that...
I think where we've had more difficulty is when we haven't had the, the grading plan done and then we get to the final and they realize that lots, configurations have to change, tree conservation plans have to be amended because what was originally shown didn't, you know, really couldn't be, you know, couldn't be done. You know, so we've had situations where we've had streets that dead-end to the boundary of a, a site. And then, you know, when they're going through and developing the road, they realize, oh, there's a 12-foot cut at the end of that road, you know, as it goes into the next phase. And now, then they have to come back and do a modification of the subdivision to eliminate the street connection because it wasn't physically possible. So, the grading plan is just that tool to have, the preliminary grading plan is just that tool to have in advance. And, and, you know, it's preliminary, you know, we're not saying final. Now, if we said the similar requirement was a final grading plan that needed to be submitted, there's a whole degree, different degree of, of, of expectation that you have when, when something is called preliminary versus final. So, if you, if, if there was like a final grading plan of the subdivision and you got to the final and it didn't match, well, you probably have to do an amendment. But if it's just a preliminary at this point, I, I don't see any concern with being able to, you know, when the final development comes in, as long as it substantially conforms, being able to approve that development without requiring a subsequent modification or having to go back through the process, similar to you preliminary utility plans and preliminary stormwater plans.
Any other questions for Bryce? Yes?
On this, the grading plan, do we require anything now?
We don't. That's why we're adding, we're adding it.
So, this would be a new addition?
Yeah, like, we do ask for it. You know, the planning administrator does have the ability to request, you know, grading plan and, and, you know, like Ms. Janney had, you know, had indicated, you know, when there's topography and you need, you know, to demonstrate that streets are going to be within the maximum grades, you know, then we, they, we do get one.
Seems like the issue may be there's a concern that there's not the flexibility in the language that you, you say that there is. Is there any additions to the language you can think of that would make that point a little clearer?
Off the top of my head, I can't, you know, think of any right off the top. But I also will say the planning administrator has the ability today to require more, you know, than what's currently required if, if necessary to meet a criteria in the code. Or we have the ability to waive this amount of requirements. So, if the site was flat and there is no, you know, grade differential, you know, we could not require a, you know, a, a grading plan at all because the grading plan would do nothing to demonstrate conformance with the approval criteria. So, there isn't that flexibility.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got three questions and I think one is more, it's not really grading, it's more[1741.95] the parking lot requirements on page nine, site plan for parking lots. And I'm actually looking at Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy because there was an issue we had, I don't know, several months ago about a property, residential property next to a commercial property on Nob Hill and we had discussions about that and part of our concern was they didn't need any review and then all of a sudden the parking is here and a six-foot fence starts below, so it only goes up four feet over the parking. And will that take care of the situation?
Yes, Counselor Anderson, Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy, your planning administrator. So, that is a really good example of a time we could have used a grading plan because we approved an adjustment to reduce a setback from a parking lot to a residential property directly next door and we just required a taller fence to mitigate that, that reduced setback. When they came in for building permits, they did grading, but we didn't have a requirement for grading. We didn't think they were going to do grading because they didn't show us any grading and we didn't require a grading plan, so when they built it, you're right, the car lights shine over that fence that we had required. So, we would have made a different decision had we known how they were going to change.
So, that's a grading issue, not a parking lot site.
Yes, that's a grading issue.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor. I'm interested in Mr. Ramus's issue about the power lines and everything else. I mean, I can see how his proposal for sounds like a good proposal from his perspective. I wonder what it sounds like from your perspective?
Well, I'll give it a shot since Public Works, I don't think there's anyone from Public Works here tonight and we hadn't seen this exact version.
Well, neither did I, that's why I figured.
Before the meeting.
I put you on the spot.
I'll give it a go. So, I guess the first thing I want to say is, I don't know about previous discretion, the code clearly states that we're not going to accept right-of-way or easements dedicated to the city if there's an encumbrance on it. So, if somebody else has a right to, you know, make us move our street or...
Which would be the power line.
Which would be the power line, yes. I believe in past, many streets that go through there are old streets and maybe predate that standard or the streets were there before the power line, I don't know. But BPA has specifically in this case changed their rules for what they will allow and when, what kind of language that they want to have in an agreement with us, which is causing some concern. So, is it likely that BPA will make us move our street? Probably not. It seems highly unlikely. I don't know if it's ever happened in the history of BPA. It seems unlikely. But from the staff's perspective, this is a major street that's going through. It's a collector. It also has major sewer facilities in there and it has the storm water for the entire subdivision underneath the power line, meaning if any of those facilities had to go, it would affect hundreds of lots, it would affect potentially downstream, you know, creeks, right? If the storm water that was designed for the subdivision is no longer able to be used. And these are things that are dedicated to the city, so if there needs to be a change in the future, it won't be today's developers footing the bill for that change, it will be the city's responsibility. So, we do think however, that there should be an opportunity to have a review and accept something different, which is why we've proposed the language. And I think from staff's perspective, Public Works and legal, who reviewed some version of the changes they proposed earlier today, we think the criteria that's proposed under number one would satisfy that. The number four seems to apply to master plan facilities, but, you know, public streets aren't always a master plan facility, sewer, stormwater, et cetera, don't necessarily always rise to the level of being in a master plan and are still very important for connectivity for sewer water, storm water for development. So, I'm not sure a reason to call them out separately than other facilities.
So, number one is a proposal that, after brief review today, the legal staff and the Public Works staff says it would fit in with what your intent is in these situations.
I believe number one is our language as...
It is, okay.
Yes.
Oh, well, no wonder you believe it's a good one if number one is yours. Then it kind of seems to me like, like, number four might be a solution to a problem that really doesn't exist because I haven't heard that this has happened before in the past or it will happen in the future. Would that be a fair assessment of whether that really happens when BPA has an easement over some street?
Counselor Anderson, maybe I can address that. So, if you look at the current language of the code in subsection D of 20050, as Lisa Anderson said, it's very clear, I don't know if there is a different interpretation, it just says all property easements and rights away acquired by the developer shall be conveyed to the city free of all liens and encumbrances. So, as she said, I don't know what happened in the past, but I don't know another way to read that other than to say that you can't have any easements crossing the right-of-way you're conveying to us. So, whether it's a master plan facility or a local street going through their development or sewer, water, any other utility, that right-of-way has to be given to us free of all encumbrances. So, whether it's master planned or not, it really doesn't make a difference. And so, yes, it would happen because now we're reading the code as it's written, as it was adopted by council at some point in the past and saying that's what it means and you've got to do it. So, their section four is a solution. We've looked at it. We don't think that's a good solution because it puts the risk on us for a multimillion-dollar facility that we'd have to figure out a new way to function.
And I would see why that might be a good solution for the developer. You don't have to answer that, that was a rhetorical question.
No, I agree. The risk is probably fairly minimal. BPA has been difficult to work.
But if the risk has to be apportioned on the developer's side or the city's side, that's an issue that we as a council have to look at. Then I do have one more, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I'm now interested in the Angela Oberry issue about the bike parking and I'm particularly interested in the requirement that you have some floor parking and I'm looking at my bike back there. I'm a big guy and I would have problems hoisting it up to the ceiling every time and I've got a, my milk carton on the back that I keep things in, you know, which would create a problem. So, I'm interested in that. And then the second one is, and I will tell you, this is a situation that I face quite a bit. In order to get to a bike parking, there's no curb cut or I've got to go down the street and go around and then ride on the sidewalk or get off and walk on the sidewalk. So, I'm interested in your response to Ms. Oberry's suggestion, which for the council is the last page of this big document.
Well, I'll give it a try and then Bryce can help me out. So, for the floor racks, we couldn't think of, none of the planners could think of any development where someone only proposed hooks or elevated racks or a wall rack or however you'd say it.
And I guess that, sorry to interrupt, but I guess that would be because they don't want them either. I mean...
Yeah, so where we do see it are in mixed-use buildings downtown and that's usually, those are for residents, like behind a locked door or something where only residents get into it and then they want to be able to fit more bikes in a smaller area, but then they still have public racks for any sort of commercial or office use, either in the right-of-way or right outside of their building. So, we didn't think that was a concern because we haven't been seeing that at all anywhere with anyone trying to just do hooks, so everybody's doing bike racks basically. And then for the curb, we did propose that language at Planning Commission and they changed it to the language that's in the code, that's before you tonight, which is that you shouldn't have to lift your bike over multiple stairs or the bike rack itself, excuse me. But they felt like that there were plenty of curb cuts, ADA ramps and that where bike racks are located in the, you know, within a certain distance of the front door of a building, that that would be an ADA accessible spot, so you would be able to get your bike.
Well, I guess I would disagree with that a bit, not with what you said, but part of the issue is downtown. And if a bicycle is going to someplace where there's not a curb, you know, curb cut or a drive or something close to the bike rack, the only way you're going to get there without stopping and lifting up over is to use a curb cut and then you're on the sidewalk and for many reasons where you're not, it's not good to be riding your bicycle downtown, including that it's verboten.
So, that motion could be made to change the language.
I want to go back to risk and the federal energy agency. I'm still trying to, isn't our, how do you assess risk with no experience? If we don't have the experience of this ever having occurred where we've had some sort of claim on easements by the Bonneville Power Administration, how do we assess risk in this? I mean, I can make one up for you. We probably shouldn't do all kinds of things. I mean, I'm still trying to figure out why you decided to aim bee hive openings. I'm still baffled by that one, why you chose...
Well, Eunice is here to answer bee questions, but that's based on best practices.
Explain to me, explain to me though, where there has never, ever, we've got federal highways going under and we've got half a West Salem going under, power lines, Highway 22 goes under major power lines. It's all over. Have we ever had them torn up and power lines or water lines and sewer lines and roads removed by BPA as they exercise their easements?
Not that I know of, but the language is for all...
Well, it's because it hasn't happened, isn't it?
The current language is for any encumbrance, so it's not, anybody owning property or having interest in the property.
So, we could accept Bonneville Power Administration's...
Through the criteria that are written, I think we could because that would be, that's how they could meet the criteria, that BPA is different, right, than a neighbor who has an easement on a lot that we don't want to accept for a road. There's a difference there and we've crafted a process for them to go through and demonstrate that.
I think part of the problem is that we're in a part of the country where so much of our power is moving along a power grid that passes, you know, for hundreds of miles from one dam to the, to the whatever next, you know, to Califor, I don't know where it's all going, but it apparently is ending up in my switch box. But I am having the hardest time understanding the risk that's at play here if it has never ever occurred before.
Well, I think...
If I may, Lisa, I think as was stated, it's, for many of the changes before you this evening in the code, it's prompted by a specific project, a specific issue, a specific point of time. The change that's being proposed would apply to all encumbrances, not just federal encumbrances. And while the risk for a BPA easement is minimal, there may be other easements, other encumbrances that would require some analysis of that risk and this process that's being proposed would allow that to happen. As the city attorney said earlier, right now, staff does not have any discretion. We cannot accept any encumbered piece of property, any encumbered easement, whether it's the federal government or any other, encumbered by any other entity.
Yeah, I guess I'm just having trouble by even characterizing this as minimal. There's none. Yeah, minimal means there's something. This is a none. This has never happened, it won't happen. I am just really truly baffled by this one and I guess if, I can propose that we write off the Bonneville Power Administration in terms of as a threat to our sewer system or water system. I'm just having, again, I think this is a manufactured problem that's causing one of the largest housing additions. We need housing in this town. It is one of our strategic goals and here is a non-existent problem interrupting that goal's accomplishment. And so, I'm having, I'm really having trouble, or we didn't mean it about housing, one or the other, I'm beginning to think a little bit. So, I really want to think on this one and I hope you'll help me figure out how we would define this in real risk language, real-life risk language. And why are we doing bee openings? Why are we putting that into our code?
Well, it's a best practice, so we followed the OSU beekeeping best practices and looked at what other cities do. That's where most of the standards came from.
So, southeast is not the correct answer to bee?
It's more about impact to neighboring properties, right? So, that's the main concern when you allow bees, or we currently don't allow them, is what kind of impact is it going to have on your neighbors? If you don't have a large lot and your neighbor all of a sudden has five or seven, you know, hives and maybe you're allergic to bees or you're just scared of bees or you just don't want them in your yard, what are the impacts? And so, most of the standards are designed to minimize the impacts, just like the standards we have for ducks and chickens and that if we get a complaint, we have a way to check that they're following the code. So, instead of saying, well, they're just, they know how to take care of bees, we have actual standards that our compliance officers can check that they're, that they're following. I don't, that's what Eunice was going to say, she's not, so.
They also mentioned was crossing parking lot standards, pedestrian crossing, will we have some sort of standard then if someone wants to get across a parking lot, will there be crosswalks or how will that be?
Yeah, there would be standards for like a sidewalk that would go through a parking lot. A lot of the newer, larger parking lots have those anyway, you'll see them. So, we have standards that they would need one from the main entrance to the sidewalk and if there's a bus stop, they need to make it closer to the bus stop. And then they need to connect the buildings, like if it's a shopping center, which most shopping centers do anyway. And then if it's a parking lot that's large enough to meet a certain threshold, there would be additional, you know, pedestrian aisles throughout, so that way if you maybe have a stroller or children and you want to walk to maybe a center pedestrian area and then walk into the door instead of kind of just dodging all the cars, that would be an option.
All right, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I'm back to the power line issue, so if I'm understanding, if I'm following the arguments correctly, our current code doesn't allow for any flexibility, specifically the kale situation out there. And the proposed language would allow, would allow us to solve that problem. Is that...
Yes.
I guess I'm not clear on what the problem is. And I understand that the developer has some suggestions on language that they think is more clear, but staff and council, our council, believe that this solves our problem, so I guess I'm confused on where the conflict is.
We have proposed something that we think that they could go through a process and solve that problem, yes. They have other language proposed.
Oh, good. So, I was following.
You were following.
Excellent, thank you.
The solution though, is to get BPA to walk away from its claim on its easement, is that it?
No, the applicant would need to meet the criteria shown here. There's four criteria that our use of the property is consistent with the terms of the easement, so we're going to use it for a street, BPA knows we're going to use it for a street, that they made a good faith effort to remove the encumbrance, clearly they're not going to get BPA to do that, that there's feasible alternatives for the relocation or modification of any of the improvements if they need, if they're ever told that they have to get out and that the city will not incur substantial costs to relocate or modify the improvements.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo, I think, something that Mayor Bennett said. We have a finite amount of land left in the city of Salem and a housing problem and we're talking about not doing something that we've been doing all along. It just, it's real frustrating to me. You know, I would, what I would recommend is that, is that you get with the folks that are recommending the land, see if you can come, some kind of compromise that would work, not just for this development that they're talking about, but for the city and its remaining land.
Any others? What happens, I'm curious, just real quickly, on mobile home parks, HOAs apparently don't cover them, would your renters are notified, help them if they, if they face a land use decision that would detriment...
Yeah, under the proposed ordinance, we will send notice to tenants, so people if they're renting their spot, we'll send notice to them and we'll actually send notice to anybody that lives on the property. So, if the property is subject to a land use application, we also send it to the property as well. So, if their property was subject to a land use application, they would get the notice or if they're next door. And we've been piloting that project since September, three or four months where we've been sending notice to tenants for all land use applications within 250 feet. We send a lot more mail now, get a lot of returns, so we're really working hard on getting our address list cleaned up, but we think it's a worthy thing to do. So, they would be covered under the proposed amendments.
And you would not get their names from the park owner, you would get it through...
We just sent to the address and it says, I think, resident or tenant or something, so it wouldn't have their name on it.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Kind of on that same point, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was curious, you mentioned about the pilot project. Has there been a good response from the tenants in terms of, you know, commenting on proposed development in that area or are you kind of, still kind of hoping to find a way to reach them in a better manner?
Yeah, it's, we haven't done a great job of tracking, you know, not every planner's, tracking every comment they get and then trying to figure out if they're the tenant or they're a property owner. So, it's not, we haven't seen a great increase in comments on any one land use application, but it does give people the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having worked next to like 400 bee hives right next door, it really didn't make a difference where the openings were, where the bees wanted to go and they have a range of a couple of miles and we'd actually requested that they move hives back to the back of their property because everybody had to get car covers because of bee poop, which is really nasty on a car when it's totally covered with it every day. So, I'd actually like to look at what OSU has put out and look a little deeper into that, which comes back to a question for our council. There was a request for continuance. Is that binding in... Is that binding in this kind of a hearing?
It is not, but the council is welcome to entertain such a motion.
Well, it sounded like we still may have some issues to see if we could resolve option one versus four, and a couple other pieces out there as well. So I didn't know what the plan of attack may be.
Well, would you like to make a motion to continue? We're heading toward close, I can hear it, unless, Counselor Anderson, did you have something?
Sure. I move we continue this until, what inning, Mr. City Manager, in the next meeting?
Mid-June.
Well, when, yeah, when...
Yeah, oh, when, yeah, okay.
We can just take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, you guys don't worry about it, we'll take care of it. Yeah, I move to, we postpone or continue this public hearing only for council comment till mid-June or later to, for some, a response from the staff on three issues that I can see. A date certain?
June 10.
Okay, give me the...
June 10.
June 10. For a response from the staff to the issues raised tonight on bees, on public power easements, and on bike parking. Those are the three, well, I made my motion.
Yes.
How about grading?
Okay, I'll say grading too, why not?
Yeah, let's just put them all in.
Second?
Second by Nanki.
Okay, I don't have to, really, we've already figured this out. I mean, these are the four issues that have been raised, and, you know, we may end up going with the staff report, but I think we'd like some response on those issues.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes, Counselor, thank you.
Just because it wasn't brought up on grading, and it sounded like there was no other options that Bryce had at hand at the moment, but could there not be similar to other things, exclusions where one would not have to? If the planning administrator can, if property is this, why can't it just be that way and have a potential list of exclusions where one would not have to provide that?
Okay. Any, anything else? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Counselor Hoy, do you want to make this motion, special orders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council designate Counselor Brad Nanki as temporary presiding officer for all city council meetings from May 15 through June 5, 2019.
Second by Anderson, any discussion?
Will you serve?
You'll serve? Okay. Okay, all those favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Information reports? Questions, comments? Yes, sir.
The red light.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I wanted to go see my law school classmate, but I got a, I have some good comments on 6D, which is the north campus. I want to congratulate the developer, the neighborhood group, groups involved, and everybody else involved, on both staff and the public for this because I think this is a very good plan. The two things that I'm most interested in in the way the plan turned out were the single-family lots all across D Street and all down Park Street, which was a big concern of the neighbors, that they were looking out at a big open field and all of a sudden there might be multi, huge apartments across from them. So I think that's very good. And the other thing that I really appreciate is the fact that there are no driveways out, exits or entrances on D Street and on Park Street, which is also a concern of the neighbors. Instead, they'll be going out to 25th and Center Street there, which are busier streets. So I think it's a good job, everybody should be commended.
Yep. It's been many years in the making, and certainly...
Mr. Mayor, I started, got involved in this when I was president of SCAN, and I ran for the council two years after my term on SCAN ended, so that's eight years ago, probably, total now.
Yeah. Yeah, it's part of all of our scrapbooks now. Okay, very good. Anything else? Okay, we have first reading.
Ordinance Bill Number 219, an ordinance relating to parking, amending Salem Revised Code, Chapter 102.
Do you want to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we conduct first reading of Ordinance Bill 2-19, Attachment 1, amending Salem Revised Code, Chapter 102, Parking, and advance to second reading for enactment.
You second it? Okay, sir?
It's your parking.
Okay, discussion, go ahead. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, I think that's it, we're adjourned.